Everyone will open up our combined work and record session in March thirty first, two thousand and twenty. Please silence cell phone and always join us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, is there any additions or deletions to the agenda?
None that I know of.
All right, how about the board? You got any, anything?
No.
Nope. All right, so Kevin, you're on the phone. Good morning, welcome, and so we're going to take right off with you. Everything is done in one meeting today. We're not having two, so you have the treatment quotes or the oil quotes for us. Go ahead, sir.
A request for quotes from Idaho and Albina, and I tried, I tried this year, this past season here to get another quote from the Western Emulsion Branch in Nevada, but Western Emulsion and Idaho are sister companies, so we have two quotes, Idaho and Albina. And Idaho was, I, I hope you guys, can you see my handwritten worksheet there? It shows.
Yeah, yes, we have it.
It shows, it shows the quantity there, and then the math with the grade to, I think it's thirty-six thousand. A little, a little less than Albina, so Idaho is apparent bitter, apparent a little bitter.
Okay, and Kevin, your, their quality and everything has all been just fine. You, we've used them before.
Historically, Lake County has used Albina asphalt for all the seal coat and for paving oils, and we've had good success historically and since I've been at the road department, both with their quality and with their ability to deliver on time. I don't recall a time when we've ever waited, so they do very well at that.
Yeah, so I hate to ask the million dollar question. Is with the times it's going across our nation right now, is there anything that could be, or is there any way that the contract, if there's any drastic fluctuation in prices downward, that we would get any benefit? And I know you can't answer that, but I would love to see that.
Yeah, I would, I would too, but they, they quote things off the asphalt index and it's, it's, it's relation to the crude oil prices that you see, but it's not, it's not a, a direct relation, I guess, but the only, the only thing we can do is, is re-quote it in effort, you know, in the hope that it would come back lower, but that would be, that would, you know, if we're, if we're serious about trying to see, we'd have to re-quote it, see if it was because of the, because of the market going down.
Yeah, I, I, I am a gambler, but I don't think there's any reason to gamble right now. There's plenty of other things going on. It's actually lower than last year, I think James had said.
Yeah, isn't this a little bit lower than last year?
Uh, and that goes along kind of with our, you know, strategy over time is to do regional work and, and that, that part of it, you know, regional work, the, the company don't have to, more of that is from the trucking side of things and the actual asphalt, liquid asphalt, because they're not hedging their bets on where, where the delivery is. I think if you guys see the the actual request for quote sheet that I email them, I, I include their locations and so forth. That helps, helps for all the price, you know, the price is down because they don't have to hedge their bets on where to deliver in that county.
Got it.
Yep. All right, so would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve the bid with Idaho for a fiscal impact of nine hundred and sixty thousand, one hundred and sixty-two dollars and ninety cents.
Motion's been made and seconded to accept the bid from Idaho Asphalt, nine hundred and sixty thousand, one hundred and sixty-two dollars and ninety cents. Further discussion? Kevin, thank you for working where that it gets more efficient, where that when you put out your quotes that you're very succinct on where the delivery would be, it makes a big difference. Those numbers going down like that, appreciate it. All in favor?
Yes, sir.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Thank you, Kevin, and you're welcome. Stay on the phone if you want. If not.
Yeah, we understand.
I think, I think we're done with you.
I, I had, if I can ask one question, I had sent Melanie just four other short items there on updates. Would I be able to review those quickly?
Oh, you have some updates? We can definitely take some updates.
I sent it, I sent it to you guys. I thought, maybe I, maybe it didn't come to you. I thought it was an email form when I they asked on there, but there's four updates here, just kind of wanted to brief one of them, which is not necessarily a decision that needs to be made, but just a theory so I can move forward with some of the budgeting for equipment, but if I may.
Okay, yeah, we don't have, none of us have anything in front of us, but it's a good time. You got us. Go ahead and hit the updates.
Um, the first one being the Forest Service coordination, or I guess attempted coordination and kind of talks and back and forth of us potentially doing some road grading work, and individually, I believe I've been able to touch base with all three of you separately, but just wanted to bring that up for, I guess, a possible consensus that I think we have enough work of our own with the resources, manpower and materials that we have available to us. And I'm not sure that stretching ourselves out that far would be a good thing at this time.
And, and I, I would definitely like to have consensus of the board on that for you to be able to go and get to work on your other things, but I'm looking, you can't see, but I, we're all three shaking our head and in agreement with where you're going, Kevin.
Okay.
So consensus of the board is, is, I guess, as far as Forest Service goes, it's different than the PLM, is we're number one priority county roads. If there's individual projects that come up that are emergency or something, probably take under consideration, but county first, is that?
Count, I, I would say county first, and I would say, I, I want you to take, take those, that is a priority. And if the Forest Service wants to work with them on some of their roads, then I expect them to do at least the majority of the legwork. And then there's no agreement in place or anything like that, so if they want help with the roads, I think we've got to have some efforts on, on their side to, to show us exactly what those need to be done, but in the meantime, I don't want you spending any more time on it unless absolutely necessary, unlike Mission or Winter Six State is an emergency, to take care of some of those roads.
Consensus of the board?
Yep.
You got it, Kevin.
Okay, thank you. The second item, the second item is just a theory of sorts. We, we have aging graders fleet. As, as some of you know, or some of you need to know, I guess, we have a, a few graders that are over ten thousand hours. Couple of them are starting to show signs, starting to use some oil, and in the planning process of succession of these graders and, and what we want to do going forward, we don't we don't want to minimize the fleet that we have anymore because of the cost. New graders are extremely expensive. We demoed two separate graders, both of them were new. One was a John Deere, one was a, a CAT, and, and what we learned is that new equipment is really nice, but we can't work on any of it. The software that we have purchased for our, our fleet of graders that we have now doesn't work with the new. In some cases, we can't even wire that, even if there was a cost to it. It's not, it's not something that the, the brands, if you will, are, are allowing capital going forward to kind of cheap maintenance in their own house with these new machines. And so, because of that, makes me a little bit nervous on these graders, and, you know, being able to service them going forward is that nature and having warranty issues and additional expenses, there's a list, but did some research, CAT specifically, on rebuilds, warranty potentials with rebuilds. And economics wise, we're talking about, you know, sixty to a hundred thousand dollars for a warranty certified rebuild versus three hundred and eighty-seven thousand for a brand new machine that we can't work on. We, we give them the grader, they rebuild it, we have that cost in it, but then we also receive a machine that's been refurbished, reconditioned, certified, and we can still work on it. It's our same machine. So, just going forward for budget, I kind of wanted to just brief all three of you there on what you might see there with my machines or capital expenses and investment into refurbishing our graders.
So I, I really like that idea, Kevin. But with that said, we also have to start a plan eventually of bringing in new graders, a replacement plan as soon as this new technology is way beyond most of us, but in the next several years, you're going to have to start coming up with a plan and rotating in some new equipment. Even rebuilding these, you know, I don't know why it might get away one time rebuilding, but the metal fatigue and everything's going to catch up with you eventually, so in back of your mind, just think of how you're going to get your fleet. A ten-year plan and starting to bring your fleet back, I guess, is why. Might be a five-year, might be a twenty-year plan, just think out outside the box a little bit.
Yeah, I agree. With this, with this theory of reconditioning and rebuild, we actually consulted with them to evaluate, specifically evaluate the, the, well, two at this time graders that are showing signs of immediate, you know, needs of attention, I guess, as far as the, as far as using oil and, and potential engine failure, transmission, things like that. So we're looking at all those options and just kind of wanted to brief you guys on it.
Yeah, thank you. Are there any other questions on that?
Uh, no, I, I think that's, I think exactly where Kevin's going is where we need to go. As far as doing some rebuilds and stuff for some of our equipment, you know, that is an immediate need. We can't work on it. It's, makes it real difficult to maintain.
Yeah, so, we're not going to change technology.
I agree, I agree. I'd still like to, to try and keep what we have going as long as we can.
Absolutely. Uh, you got more updates, Kevin?
Yeah, just two real quick ones. I was, I was approached in Crystal Valley with some concerns about, let me find it here. Specifically Holly Street and Jingle Bells Street that goes back to the EMS building. The concern is the transverse cracking, the very roughness of it for the ambulance service going in and out of there, and what potential help or what materials we would, might be using in Crystal Valley, or what we could do to help that situation. So I just wanted to kind of brief the board on, on that potential need specifically related to the EMS services there. The ambulance direction coming out of its building and getting to TV Highway is about eight hundred and fifty feet long between the two stretches of road. And they, they're in, those two roads, well, along with some other ones, but those two specifically are kind of in shambles, cracked up and very rough, and the concern is the roughness in the ride for the ambulance when there's somebody in.
So th- those are not county roads, but probably paved by the county many years ago.
Yeah, many years ago.
They, they may have been, yeah.
Yeah. So is it something, Kevin, that cracked ceilings would help, or is it beyond that?
Yeah, maintenance wise, it's beyond that. It's, to be honest, even, even if we did have some extra asphalt, we tried to put it on top. It would be a waste of money. These two, these two roads are, they're, they need to be reclaimed. They're at, they're past that point for, for what general maintenance could do for them.
Okay, so what are you thinking? Like grind it with our grinder?
Well, yeah, I mean, that's all we'd have to do. I, I don't know that it would take a great deal of time. I'm just wanting to kind of brief you guys so that if you're up there, you, you want to take a look at it or see what we may want to invest in helping with that. I do have, I do have asphalt mechanized patches planned for TV Highway this fall because we're going to chip that road the following year, so we, we will have some paving equipment in that area, and we will also have the, the zipper, the reclaimer machine in that area too, so there's potential, there's potential to help with that, but it would be a fairly significant cost and where all that would come from, I'm not exactly sure.
Yeah, so, so whenever you get those numbers put together, get them to us for us to try to figure out something, I don't know what.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, the last thing is we still have two, we still have two operator positions open and trying to get them scheduled and interviewed during this coronavirus deal. Wanted to try to see what I tried to ask there last Friday, but I'm not sure if you guys could hear, hear us on the phone. There was a few people there last Friday that were trying to say hello, but I'm not sure if it was muted. You couldn't hear us to ask, you know, about these type of situations with the coronavirus, social distancing and all of these things, if we should keep moving forward with those items.
I, Jay's not in the room with us. I'd say that you should still be able to, I would think, do the interviews electronically and be able to move forward.
Okay.
But apparently last Friday, there were several people on. We never heard from any of you. We wasn't hearing on our end, but why don't you follow up with Jay on the process to be able to do interviews where it's not in person, or if it would be appropriate to keep the social distancing and do the screening and bring them in. Talk, talk with Jay on that. That's my thoughts, Kevin. You need, you need to get them hired as soon as you can, I guess, is what I'm saying.
Oh, yeah, we, we need to move forward. I just wanted to, to, just to see what the limitations we have being as though we're, we're trying to keep people from coming in.
Yeah.
Or congregating, I guess, and we almost have to do that in some fact to get an interview, so.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you, Kevin. Any other questions, Kevin?
All right, thanks, Kevin.
Thanks, Kevin.
Thank you.
All right, Darwin Johnson postponed land sale.
I was late. You can take the voice. No, go ahead. You've been sitting here a lot.
One of the party, first one to the cake.
What are you saying, I'm old?
I said cake.
You guys just knew this later.
So two things, hopefully you saw the second thing, but the first one was, yeah, just postponing just a month of land sale. Because of the timing of when we may get it. You know, it's best that we have land sale with actual people here, so this, I'm, I'm saying one month at this point, but we'll reevaluate you know, through the weeks, and then we have to come back to you and say, hey, one more month, and then first week in July or something like that. So budget wise, you know, we've already, you know, exceeded the budget for land sale, you know, this will just roll into next year anyways. So financially, this year won't affect us at all. So just wanted to point that out.
So what's the current date that you're going to be setting?
So it would be June first.
June first, right now?
Yeah, June first, which would, you know, we'd have published dates for consecutive weeks, so it would be May sixth, thirteenth, twentieth and twenty-seventh, which has, has to be done by, by statute, so.
Consensus of the board to change it to the first of June. Perfect.
And the other thing, I sent an email out just on Friday with, afforded you a request letter from Diana Otero with the Climate Housing Authority.
Oh, yeah.
And hopefully you've seen that for one of the properties that is currently on an auction to sell, which is the two-twenty North L Street across from K corner to Lakeview Lockers. They're working with, with Ross McGarver and his wife to, to change that building into something else. So the housing authority has, has made a request that we consider transferring that piece of property to them. Hopefully you've seen the letter. If you haven't, we can go over it, but there's, there's a few more steps, and I also afforded you guys information on on some of the other statute language that's in there. And we've got some time, and she said she could get on the phone, so I just want to bring it up to you now. You know, like I said, since there's consensus to wait till June for the auction, because I can deal with this in the next couple of weeks and come before you again.
So several, several questions on that. This is a nonprofit. It's not another taxing district or anything that we can just give the land to.
So housing authorities, you can, specifically to housing authorities for low income housing, which this project would be for.
So we could, so is, like, several different questions. Is this going? Is the private sector going to be benefiting from this financially? If the private sector is going to be benefiting from it financially, then is it appropriate to donate land to somebody that's going to be financially benefiting? I want to make sure that we follow all the rules and everything. We need transitional housing, absolutely, absolutely. We've worked on this for years. Whenever years ago was able to help get started, it wasn't a donation of the land, if I remember right, it was at a lower rate, yes, we sold it to them. And so and, and just, just because we received a letter of some lands out across the state this week of of appropriate ways that you can't benefit or make money off of land sales, I want to make sure, right, we follow this.
And that's why I'm saying I don't need, you know, you guys are definitely not asking for you guys making a decision today. I will check the legal counsel as well, and that's why I was putting some of this other language in there, referencing, looking at closer.
For me, if Diane Otero is the one that's requesting this, she should come before us and make that request before.
Yeah, and she, she said she was willing, and I have her number if you wanted to call her, but I, I, that's why I say it's a little early. I would like to talk to legal counsel first and then get her on the line.
Well, and I want to disclose, I've been talked to from, by the owners of the building that's sort of looking at transition on this myself, Ross and Kelly Garver, they called, but I, I advise them that we need to follow appropriate guidelines, not order opposed it, just know we need transitional housing, but there's this mix of private, nonprofit and everything that's got me a little bit.
So my assumptions, you know, it would have to go to the housing authority, and it would be a versionary clause in there that's saying, you know, you can't sell those to a private industry or anything like that. I'm not sure exactly how that's all going to roll out. I think maybe it's a combination of, of funding that they will be going after with the housing authority. Make that all work, but that's, that's beyond this request. I mean, obviously they're connected, but to a housing authority, you can't donate land, and this would be one of those.
So and something for you to expect, I guess, would be is there, I'm sure there has to be some land that's put from the county to Lakeview that would have to consider all that.
I'm aware of that, but Jeanne and I have spoken about it as well, so she, she's specifically talking about this property too, you can. And she's comfortable with allowing that to become what will be the parking lot, essentially. The way of housing there, they would put the parking.
And go from residential to a zone commercial.
Uh, it would still be residential, just they may have to rezone it to multifamily.
Multifamily, yeah, okay.
The parking lot wouldn't have to be, the parking lot would be right fit within the normal zoning.
So that's all with the town of Lake?
Yep.
Okay.
But, and that's why I say this is just one of their steps that they need to look at, but, you know, we don't need a decision. Thankfully, no land sale. If the consensus has moved out a month, then it'll give me a little more time to do it. Just came in on Friday, maybe Thursday, but I've afforded it to you Friday.
Yeah, it's good to give you time to research.
Yep. I just wanted to do what I have.
I have one question, real quick, on a different topic. As an update, have you heard what's happening with the legal hearings? Have they been pushed back out?
That's a good question. I'll check on it. I don't know, but I believe that they've all been pushed out.
Okay.
Oh, and I know, and I can give you an update on the Obsidian Solar Center's FSEC hearing, which was scheduled for Silver Lake, I think on the twenty-seventh or something this month. That's been postponed as well.
Yep.
They're leaving the record open, and I'm sure there's still some comments, but the hearing.
It's postponed.
And I did want to say that yesterday, prepared all the notices for Planning Commission, that it will be done completely by this phone for teleconferencing on the twenty-first, right, well. We have six files that I really need to keep moving forward. As you guys know, we're having a May meeting, May eleventh, if not sooner, and so we're not going to have a May meeting, and then we'll have a June meeting, and I'll give you some time to prepare, you know, getting ready for a June meeting yet. Things are still happening, and we're still looking to exceed our average for the year. Yeah, I'm excited to see how Planning Commission works this next month. I'll probably have our chair, I'll screen him or whatever, to come in and have a volunteer pool of chairman on board.
And have everyone else on the phone.
He and I will be here, and then everyone else will be on the phone.
Good.
Thanks, Kevin.
Thank you, Darwin. Thank you. Mr. Burnman, you're up next. First one is West Engineering Agreement.
Glad you know that you gave me consensus to attend to a war, so I did, since you asked, accepted. And we put an agreement together, legalists looked at it, and just need your signature, and we get through.
Has it been reviewed by legal counsel?
Yeah.
Yes. Right, so I have no questions. I would entertain a motion.
You must have been working with me for almost two years now or something.
Well, you're looking at us enough, so, yeah, right, because you're looking for a motion. Mark, do you have anything?
I have nothing. I want to make a motion, so.
Okay. I'll make a motion to accept the agreement for what, with West Engineering for services at the airport. Century West, sorry. What did I say?
West.
West, okay, sorry. Century West.
Still West. Can't choose that.
All right, motion made. Both of this is just a nod, we don't need to talk. Most have been made and seconded to accept the agreement between the county and Century West Engineering Consulting. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Your next item is sprinkler bid.
Do you guys know, or I don't know if I guys know, we've had our, our sprinkler system's very old, so every year we'll replace them. All, all year long, replacing and bend together and finding it, so I went ahead and went out for bids for these sprinkler systems, more convenient, more efficient, water efficient, save money type of stuff in the long run. So I went out for bids, I received two bids, I didn't get my third bid, but I did reach out to Springtime Landscaping and Bend Origin, and they didn't want to come down here and give you a bid, so I got the other two with Wet and Wild and Four Seasons, and I want to go with the Wet and Wild for twenty-seven thousand. I can't remember how.
Or is that one of those there? I'm, I'm liking the Wet and Wild.
Well, we need to, we need to do some because we just, we're putting about two to three thousand dollars a year into the sprinkler system, just for me.
Yeah, no, I, I think that's a, I just never heard of this one, actually, so.
I like when permission holders stutter, that's why I kept talking.
Oh.
I'll make a motion to accept the bid from Wet and Wild for twenty-seven thousand, four hundred and seventy dollars.
Seconded.
Please, no further discussion.
That's got to be made so far.
To accept the bid to Wet and Wild, twenty-seven thousand, four hundred and seventy dollars. Further discussion?
What was that again?
Um, the only thing that I don't see maybe have reviewed good enough is a start date and an end date. We need, once they start, we need to get this down and in early.
Right, they're going to start as soon as I call them. We'll have the contract, we'll put the contract in. I didn't, I didn't put a contract together until you guys approved it.
Okay, so in that contract, make sure that there's an end date because we, you know.
Right.
I doubt that.
Yeah, but how are you going to do that really?
Cut off, cut off Wet and Wild. Where's this?
I don't know, I'm going to, with this coronavirus.
With this coronavirus thing.
Social distancing.
Well, some will have to ask them too, how they feel. And now that I have the approval, I'll call them, talk to them, coordinate you. I'll put the contract together and have them sign the contract like we always do.
It might be the perfect time, sorry, it might be the perfect time for them to build, get there and get it done, so.
And I think they'll be okay. I mean, they're out there working around away from people.
I need, Dave, did you have further discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Sounds good. Any update or anything for you, Dave?
Uh, just with, with what's going on, I mean, my guys are cleaning every other day, blacking down stuff. You guys know, my guys are doing a great job with this, you know, this effective thing. We're cleaning all the time, very often. So if you see him, give him a thank you. Washing your door handles every morning, so.
Appreciate that.
Thank you very much. All right, thank you, guys.
Thank you, Dave. Now let's skip the next one of those eight minutes.
No, unless we get this.
Well, mine's not gonna be as exciting these days. I don't have anything to talk about Wet and Wild. Much to Commissioner Albertson's dismay, I don't have that subject today.
You're gonna be right.
My, my kids always tell me, don't engage, and I'm struggling right now.
We are on, we're on video, so I'm not gonna reengage.
All right, thank you.
With that said.
You have amendment I D A number five, five, six, five. Would you explain that to us, sir?
I would, what that is, is that's a I D A we have, our adult justice office has with the Department of Corrections to provide this email capabilities over D O Cs and cell phones. So there's no, what was before is an amendment, we entered into the agreement about two years ago. And this is, this amendment is to extend the life of that, you know, I D A, which is I believe at the end of this, excuse me, at the end of this, this calendar year, so they're asking to extend it for two more years. And then what's bolded on the front page, the second page, is just cleanup language. It doesn't, it doesn't change the way we're doing business, it doesn't change how we're being built. It's just an extension.
Yeah, it's just just a lot of additional language or new language.
New language replaces old language or media stuff. It's just cleanup, try to get more clear.
Okay.
And the only county, I'm not the only, Lake County, we're not the only county that got this amendment. There's Hurney County, Yumitala County, Malawa County, Wasco County, and then what we call the tri-county area for community corrections, which is Sherman, Wheeler, and Gilliam County. We're all in this together, so we split the cost of this.
You want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept the amendment to I D A five, five, six, five between Lake County and the Oregon Department of Corrections.
Seconded.
Motion's been made and seconded to accept I G A five, five, six, five between Lake County and the Oregon Department of Corrections. Just a verbiage change, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. You want to do any bit of an update or anything?
Sure. Last week, the juvenile department was staffed with, I think, some face shields, masks, whatever, whatever my call to the hospital, Commissioner Albertson delivered eighty of those last week. We had another request for another two hundred. We're currently out of supplies for those because the hospital has ordered those, foam for the headbands. We need more elastic for back straps. So those have been ordered, and those will be coming in. Currently, we have two hundred masks, face shields, sitting downstairs on the table, and they'll be put together. So we're just waiting for the supplies to trickle in so we can get started.
So thank, thank you to your department and Commissioner Albertson for pulling that together. I know Judy was very thankful. And so our county family seems to be stepping up, so thank everybody. I believe Commissioner Williams, your wife's been some things. Summer Lake, and so a lot of people are stepping up. It's great to see, like his wife's making masks, and these advisors, we call advisors, and so.
And we're running the same issue of just needing the elastic and everything like that, you know, and just materials.
So I'll have some of that foam today. The elastic's not gonna be here for a little bit, but we've got some elastic that we can work out as long as we get some foam. And we're on down there after that meeting. At the same time, I'd like to acknowledge our citizens that are stepping up. I know in these name individuals, but our citizens in the great county of Lake are stepping also. You have a question?
Also, he's, Community Corrections is doing the trapline for me. They're laminating and taking things all over the county for me, and they've really been helpful. I couldn't do it without them.
On their information board?
On the information boards, it's been a fantastic. We are, we perform, can windbreak the rules, task with staying up on that.
Yeah.
I just give them the information and they get, make it happen.
It, it looks great on the north end, and everyone really appreciates that. And just so my board knows, it was, you know, there was a little bit of congregating around a lot of those information boards. People were reading and stuff, and it's like, hey, social distancing now. But they, the community really appreciates the information. Because not everyone has social media or access to this type of information locally, and what we're doing. So it's, it's made a huge impact for a lot of the folks.
And one thing we've done is we've predated some of that information. So a lot of the meetings happen in the afternoon, like today. We'll get some information put together this afternoon. If we go to put it out tomorrow with today's date, we can get it out here vocally today. Right, north, it's gonna take some time, so we get up there tomorrow, another day, ourselves. Yesterday's news, today's news, so it's not so much cheating the system. We're just getting the information out there to everybody at the same time with the same data on the, on the material. So maybe later this afternoon, information goes out tomorrow, first hand.
Got it.
Right, so.
So and I know you're laminating and everything, but we do have our employee in Northlake at the annex. If that would help get some things posted. Can you do it electronically, pardon me?
We have to laminate them for the boards.
Well, may, maybe it's as simple as getting up there so they can be laminated, some laminate or put them in the voucher that you can staple or whatever. That, just the thought of getting information out.
I don't disagree with that, Commissioner, but I'm a fan of one point of contact. So it's consistent and it's done, and we, we know it's done, and right now we have that. Kenny's been stand up and making, he's got his normal route that he makes, so he covers everything in the same day.
Nothing against Kenny, it's just you're saying you have a day's lapse time, I'm just trying to eliminate the day's lapse.
We haven't done that yet.
We haven't had any lapse time.
Oh, okay.
It gives me the information first thing in the morning or late, late, late at night, one day, we print it off the next morning, and we laminate it, get it out.
Oh, okay, I, I thought you said it's one day, one day off.
If by chance, if by chance something is typed up from the doctors or the hospital.
I must have missed, I must have heard you wrong.
With today's date, we want tomorrow's date because that's when we're gonna hang it up. We don't want to hang up last week's information. Okay, yeah. Up to date, so my hats off to my staff, they've really stepped up to the play. Your knowledge, your staff, really stepped up on the masks or the shields or whatever they're called right now.
Excuse me?
Visor.
Visor, and then Kenny as well. And my known staff were being available and accessible to monitor, which is new to us, monitor our clients as opposed to supervise our clients. It must be difficult, but it's not what we're accustomed to.
Yeah, the visors, so they wanted the visors because our homemade face masks might not be completely as safe as a regular one. And so if they have the visor on too, then it really helps stuff.
Right, right, so those visors, for the most part, where they're helping sanitize them before they use them, they could almost reuse them to certain extent.
Yeah, they can reuse them as much as they can.
And that's the real thing about the foam, it's wet then, if that's what you wanna call it. And there was talk about just using some double sticky tape. Double sticky tape, once it gets wet from sanitizing, it's gonna fall apart. So if we're doing a hot glue gun, you can sanitize that all you want, it's not gonna fall apart.
Right.
So they made some simple modifications that best fit their needs because the, the plan we had at first were rather wrong for some of the smaller, shorter folks at the hospital that are using them. So they kind of kept on how they thought it might work best for them. So we just adopted, we adopted that and it's worked. We've got two hundred of them sitting downstairs, very good, very good, get our manufacturer line up.
Very good, appreciate that.
We do. I'll be, that's all that's, all right. I'll be talking to you in good.
Thank you. Yeah, I would actually appreciate an update on some of that, thank you. Yeah. Have a great day. Thanks, Jake.
We got meeting minutes of three seventeen, three sixteen.
Motion. I would make a motion that we approve the minutes for three seventeen and three sixteen.
Second. Motion's been made, seconded, approved minutes as stated, any further discussion?
No, sir.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
So now, do you have an update on Jick?
Sure, what would you like to know?
Is it on smooth like you want it?
Yeah, I've got my trapline going, that goes out twice a week. We haven't had to change any dates. But I really am passionate about getting information out, and putting things out economically for the county, like things that people can do to help themselves with unemployment information. I put out health information that's vetted by Judy. I do an update every day and send that out, and I compile all the information coming in and make sure it's cohesive. And so if anyone wants to access our updates, they can, they're on the website. We have E O C meetings twice a week now, starting this week, which is great because they take up a lot of time sometimes. That's helping getting me, helping me get like my other work done still, not having those every day. And those are going, I think it's, it's been amazing, like the partnership in the community and how everyone's come together, helping each other out, and it's been great so far. A lot of time put into it, but I think it's, I think it's helping people.
I really wanna say thank you, Melanie, for all the work that you've done with the Jick, and it really has made a huge difference. I've, I've been watching the social media feeds on all the community pages, especially on the north end with the Christmas Valley one and two and some of the other community pages where they'll have discussions, some of them you'll have four hundred comments on misinformation that gets thrown out there. But I see people grabbing stuff from the Lake County page and other places that we put out through the Jick, and they're using that to dispense.
Yeah, and I think it's really helped with the hysteria level.
It has.
As soon as we got that up and going, that's kind of, everything's kind of mowed out somewhat.
I think people appreciate having access to the information and knowing that we're involved and that, that Lake County pullwork and move forward together, and I think it's been huge. So I just want to say thank you for all your work on that. It's been huge.
You know, absolutely.
Sorry to interrupt. No, 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 that's, that's a great, great update. I, myself, on that update, I'd really like to see, I relate to expressly whenever we're having these deaths across the state of Oregon, and it explains, has age underlying circumstances or not? Which I think, for me, and I'll speak for me individually, it's not comforting, but at least I understand a little bit more about this virus that's going around and attacking people and the deaths. There's usually always underlying circumstances. That's no salvation, whether it is for your mind, you're starting to understand a little bit more about how this is attacking people. So I appreciate that part of having the businesses on there that's open and closed and stuff. Paranoia, I mean, people, I think people really appreciate that. And the more that you can ask people, let you know.
Yeah.
You know, we, we get calls, random calls, we get upset calls and everything. But I'm still a firm believer in keeping everything running as safely as we can. Not only talking to county, but the private sector too. I appreciate it, same as your other two commissioners.
Ginger, Jessica, and Maria give me that information as it comes in, so, produce to them for.
Yeah.
It, it takes a team, like I, I do a lot of research, but then like the stuff like business hours and stuff, how those change. And I wanna provide like a quick resource for you guys to be like, okay, this is what's going on today. And it's available on our website. We've been putting that on the trapboards because it's a lot of.
I, I think something that might be helpful, maybe a little bit more thinking about, just thinking off the top of my head right here is maybe checking with Kenny for the building side of it, for inspections and everything. And of Darwin, so that people know that we're still operating and how that's working. You know, there's the construction site of the world and how, how those inspections are getting done. Just try to keep that moving too, people know about that, and they try to stay more in compliance, I guess. And we have a lot of non-compliance things.
The thing is, is like I got a phone call yesterday wanting us to put our county employees to work in other places. They didn't realize that they were still working. They thought since the courthouse was shut down, then none of our employees are working. And I'm gonna make that a point, that everybody's still working. It's just remotely as much as possible, and then the courthouse is just close to the public, we're still doing business.
Oh, yeah, there's a ton of work that still needs to be done, especially our assessor's office and others. There's.
Count payable.
Right.
Budgeting, general work.
Right, in the middle of our budget process, and our people are still working.
Yep.
So that's a very valid point.
Yes, I, I think that's absolutely.
All right, the other thing, I think it just, as far as an update, when I spent some time this last week up on the north end and fielded a few calls on my cell phone from folks that want us to somehow shut so many other things down, and I think a lot of this reaction is coming from fear. And I think it can be very dangerous, we would make the worst decisions in my life, and I said this the other day to someone. I've made very bad decisions in my life, but the worst decisions I've made, I made out of anger and fear. And we need to be very careful when we make decisions in that kind of an emotional state. And, you know, I, we had an incident up there in the north end where a local R V park, because it was spring break, there was a bunch of people that came into the R V park, and, and we had some neighbors that called, and they called the governor's office, and they called a lot of other people saying, these people aren't practicing social distancing, we need to shut this business down, we need to do this. It was one family. It was one family, they had a lot of kids, and they were all in one giant big R V. And the governor's executive order does not apply to immediate family on social distancing. And so, but from the outside looking in, it's like, oh, these people are all crowded together. Well, it is a family, and it was spring break. And the idea of, of dispersing a family, I mean, it just, you gotta know all sides of this. But people see that, they're instantly afraid, and they, and they call up the governor's office, they call me, and they keep me on the phone. I won't say who it was, but I just want to make this clear that I think it's, and I kind of read the person the riot act on the phone because the fact is, we're reacting out of fear in those situations, and I think that's, that's quite dangerous.
Well, and I think some of the misconception out there towards our duties as the Board of Commissioners is what our authority is.
Right.
I believe we've all got phone calls, and I actually had one yesterday that said, you guys need to go shut down these private businesses, that's your job.
Right.
No, that is not our job.
I've had a couple of those.
Nor do we have the authority to do that. Those private businesses need to operate within the guidelines of the executive order. And then I can't even say the enforcement, it'll probably be law enforcement if they're not, which, um, is that.
Or they won't get, you know, any stimulus funding later on or anything like that, you know, I mean.
But we don't have the authority to go in and shut down private businesses.
Nor do you want us to.
Nor the desire. No, I do, I, I think there could be lawsuits later of being financially harmed if that happens.
Well, the constitutionality of it. Well, the constitutionality of it too. I think that this is very thin ice that we're treading on when we start making decisions out of fear. So.
Yep.
Anyway, just wanted to share my thoughts with the board and let you guys know that's kind of what I was dealing with.
We're all on the same page and.
I think it's good for our public to know that that's kind of how our, how we feel too.
Yeah, yeah, we, well, and, and, uh, every half hour on the phone on that is a half hour not given with our state legislature or.
Right.
Governor's office.
And we can't work with anyone else to follow up on things that actually matter, like what's happening with our cattle prices right now, what's happening in our market, why our fuel is backed up and pipelines and everything else, because it's not being consumed. So we have tankers and ships off the coast that aren't able to even offload their load because we're not u- we're not using fuel. I'm not saying it's a bad thing. I'm not saying it's a good thing. I'm saying that we've got a lot of stuff going on and I just wanna state. I don't wanna get your phone call if you're going to call me and ask me to shut down a private business. I don't wanna hear. If that's all you got. That's it. I don't, don't call me.
Unless you, unless you have a solution.
Unless you've got something to say that's actually going to help. If you just call and complain, I don't wanna get any more phone calls from you.
What's that? Do we have any other meetings?
Quote, unquote.
Yeah, I mean, the other meeting is on updates. Moving along, um.
We've been a little cabin furious.
So, so we got legal updates. Uh, do you guys wanna take a five minute break to get a cup of coffee and get legal counsel on the phone?
Sure, that'd be great.
All right.
And remind us about any.
Pardon me?
One of the executive sessions is.
Well, first we'll ask if there's anything in open session, then.
Just knowing.
Then we'll go into executive session. We'll come back into session in two minutes to ten, uh, joint session. Do you have anything for open session on legal updates now?
No.
All right, so we'll go into executive session.